Thank you, gentlemen. This is the call to order of the Open Public Session of the Harupa Unified School District Board of Education. Desearmos recordarles que esta reunión se transmite simultáneamente en español. Si desea escuchar la interpretación en español de esta reunión, accede al enlace incluido en la agenda disponible en la página web del distrito. Gracias. Mrs. Worley, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Karen Bradford.
Present.
Melissa Regal.
Present.
Dr. Eric Ditweiler.
Here.
Robert Garcia.
Here.
Joseph Navarro.
Present.
Student Board members. Priscilla Perez.
Present.
Haley Bisbee.
Present.
Erica Garimondo. We will note Erica is absent this evening. Staff advisors. Dr. Trenton Hanson.
Present.
Daniel Brooks.
Present.
Dave Dubrowski.
Present.
Paula Ford.
Present.
Rosa Santos Lee.
Present.
Tonight's flag salute will be led by Mr. Rourke of the IT Department, and please remain standing for a moment of silence afterward. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and which it stands: One nation under God, indivi- with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we honor the memory of Rick Sapian, who was employed by our district from 1988 to 1999 as a head custodian and who passed away on May 1st. He met his future wife Linda on a blind date on a Friday, the 13th, but they were married for 51 years. America is a combat marine in Vietnam. We extend our appreciation and condolences to his family. Join with me in a moment of silence. Please be seated. Our inspirational comment is provided by trustee Navarro.
Thank you, President Bradford. I'm so excited for our kids to be back in school with their teachers and friends. It was to swap those lazy summer days for early mornings, algebra homework, and pop quizzes. Yeah, I'm glad that's over. But while the classroom settings may have changed, going back to school can still feel like a chore. So to add some inspiration to the district, I'd like to state that education is key to unlocking the world. It's a passport to freedom. To those that want to make a difference, just know, education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world. And let us remember, one book, one pen, one child, one teacher can change the world. Thank you.
Thank you. That's true. Reports from closed session, Mr. Brooks, please.
Thank you, President Bradford. During closed session, by unanimous vote of 5 to 0, with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the board voted to appoint Monica León as the Director of Human Resources. And Ms. León is right here. Also during closed session, by unanimous vote of 5 to 0, with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the board voted to appoint Mr. Pablo Ponce as Assistant Director of Maintenance and Operations. And he's there in the back. Also during closed session, by unanimous vote of 5 to 0, with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the board voted to appoint Ms. Romina Mesa as Assistant Principal of Harupa Valley High School. Ms. Mesa. And also during closed session, by unanimous vote of 5 to 0, with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the board voted to appoint Mr. Peter Zamora as Assistant Principal of Harupa Valley High School. Mr. Zamora. During closed session, by unanimous vote of 5 to 0, with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the board voted to appoint Ms. Amy Noiz as the Coordinator of Education Technology. Ms. Noiz. During closed session, by another unanimous vote of 5 to 0, with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the board voted to appoint Ms. Jaclyn Paul as the Coordinator of Communications. And lastly, by unanimous vote of 5 to 0, with all trustees voting in favor and none opposed, the board voted to appoint Ms. Maria Rodriguez as the Coordinator of Pupil Services. And unfortunately, Ms. Rodriguez was not able to be here tonight, but we congratulate her. Thank you, President Bradford.
Thank you, and welcome, and congratulations to all. Agenda item 1. Welcome, and welcome to our new student board members. This can be the start of an exceptional career for you, as evidenced by a former student board member, your own role model from our district, Dr. Angelov Farukh, who once sat at that table. He went on to earn his bachelor's, master's, and doctorate degrees, became the founding director of the UC Riverside Center for Economic Development and Innovation, president of the Riverside Unified District Board of Education, and is now a candidate for state senator. So when I look at the two of you, I think, oh, the places you might go. So welcome. Superintendent Hanson, would you introduce our student board members, please?
Absolutely. Excited tonight to welcome these two young ladies. I had the opportunity to meet with them, I believe, last week, in a little bit of a training and learn a little bit about them. They're amazing individuals who really care about their school, their school community, and have a great desire to serve. And so we're happy to have- We have from Harupa Valley High School, Priscilla Perez, and from Patriot High School, Haley Bisbee. I want to welcome you both. Now allow each of you to share a report about what's happening at your school. So let's start with Haley tonight.
Good evening. My name is Haley Bisbee, and I'm a junior president on behalf of Patriot High School. Now begin my student report. Returning to campus for the first time since March of 2020 was the case for many students. Partaking in previously virtual school year, the majority was ecstatic, although apprehensive, to once again set foot on campus and enter our classrooms in person. In an attempt to ease the transition back to campus, Patriot hosted a three-day-long introduction, referred to as Week of Welcome, during which administrators and teachers provided guidance and information to new as well as returning students. Beginning on Friday, August 6th, students reported to each of their six periods to meet their teachers for the academic school year and become familiar with their schedules. Upon returning the following week on Monday, students attended a series of workshops throughout the day according to their grade level, where teachers and administrators provided students with information specific to their needs and consideration of their prior knowledge. The final day was spent once more by students attending their six periods, participating in icebreaker activities with their classmates and teachers. According to feedback inquired by means of Google Forms, the response to Week of Welcome was overall very positive, being reported to have relieved anxiety and tension in students regarding the return and navigation of our campus. Transitioning from Week of Welcome, the remainder of the week spent beginning instruction in most classes, concluding the week with an opening parade for fall sports during lunch this past Friday. Led by band and supported by cheer, along with hundreds of students who gathered in the quad to watch, Patriots' fall sports teams walked through the center of campus, inducing applause by the student population. Watching as students cheered for one another and truly mingled for the first time in months, it was great to see our warriors gathering to form such a welcoming and supportive environment, smiles on their faces as they did so. Regarding updates at Patriot, Club Rush will be taking place August 17th and 18th during lunch, providing students a chance to become educated regarding our more than 30 clubs on campus, as the officers of each club prepare tables, forms, and coves, ready to get students involved. After taking a hiatus due to distance learning, during which several clubs ceased operation, clubs are once more meeting. On August 19th, from 6 o'clock to 7:30, our night will take place, functioning as parents guided by their students, will log into Power School Learning to access class or Zoom links. Our first home football game, also known as our rivalry game, will take place on August 27th at Harupa Valley at 7:00 PM. Furthering our discussion regarding sports, Patriot will be implementing virtual ticket sales beginning this year, by which parents will purchase their tickets to sporting events online through GoFan.co. Simply stating their name to ASB students upon arriving at the event, who will then cross their name off a list for entry. This will make for a much quicker entry process. Lastly, ASB will be hosting a blood drive on September 8th in collaboration with LifeStream, following a series of operations during lunch, providing students a chance to sign up to donate on the scheduled date. That is all I have for you today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Priscilla, would you like to share with us?
Good evening, President Bradford, trustees, Dr. Hanson, and Cabinet. My name is Priscilla Perez, and I am representing Harupa Valley High School. In preparation for the start of school, we were pleased to hold in-person JAG Days, which is our registration week, from June 26th to June 29th. We were so happy to see everyone back on campus and excited for our return to in-person classes. On our first day of school, ASB admin and teachers treated incoming freshmen and sophomores to campus with a welcoming introductory assembly. They had the chance to take optional tours of the school and grab some free JAG swag before heading off to classes. Our fall sports are now practicing for upcoming games, and football hosted a scrimmage with Rubido last Friday night. A lot of families and students came out to support both teams, and the overall vibe was very positive. Our ASB class is now in preparation for our homecoming week, which is scheduled for the second week of September. Meetings are starting up on campus for clubs such as We Volunteer, Class Council for Class of 2023, Avid Club, JAG Migos, et cetera. Thank you for your support, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, ladies, for your reports this evening. We look forward to hearing more from each of you and more about your schools throughout the year. Thank you again for being here.
Thank you, ladies. Agenda item 2, recognition. A recognize Harupa Valley High School FFA and Rubido High School FFA. Mr. Dubrowski.
Thank you, and I believe I see some FFA jackets out there. So if you are an FFA member from Harupa Valley or Rubido High School, can you stand? And if you're already standing, can you wave so everyone can see who you are? So the Harupa Valley Chamber of Commerce held its Community Awards Dinner on Friday, July 16, where Harupa Valley High School FFA and Rubido High School FFA were presented with the Young Achiever Award. Administration would like to congratulate them on a well-deserved recognition. Congratulations.
Thank you, and congratulations, students. Agenda item 2B, recognize Teacher of the Year recipients. Mr. Dubrowski.
Thank you, and again, and I believe I saw some of our teachers in the audience. So as I read your name, can you please stand? On Thursday, July 29th, five Harupa teachers were recognized as 2021 60th Teachers of the Year. These teachers are celebrated and recognized for going above and beyond for their students and for their impactful contributions as educators and difference makers. Administration would like to recognize teachers Jennice Bailey from Rubido High School, Laura Gonzalez from Virtual Learning Elementary, Blanca Preciado from Mission Middle School, Rochelle Rowe from Harupa Middle School, and Ramona Sanchez from Missionville Elementary.
Thank you so much. You looked great during the presentation on Assemblymember Cervantes' Zoom call. Thank you. Let's see. Agenda item 2C, Recognize Funding for Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, Title II, Adult Education and Family Literacy Act. Mr. Dubrowski.
Thank you. CDE recently notifies us that, once again, the district has been awarded funding for the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, Title II, Adult Education and Family Literacy Act grant in the amount of $238,170.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3, Board Comments. May we start with you, trustee Ditweiler, please?
Thank you, President Bradford. Well, we're off and running. And everybody's wearing one of these. And it's not a big deal. We got to keep doing it, and we got to get the shots. But we're going to be back with Zoom calls and- So hang in there, folks. And a special thanks to all the district staff who are working extra hard because there's understaffed and there's supply shortages. So we just have to keep patient and hang in there, and everybody do their part, and we'll get through it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Navarro, please.
Thank you, President Bradford. Congratulations to all our appointments. We have the utmost confidence in you and happy to have you on our team. Just want to remind our community that the vaccine is still available, and I encourage you, the who haven't received it and gotten it, to do so if possible. I had a friend pass away this last week after a long battle of COVID in the ICU. She leaves behind four kids and a devastated friends and family. I also got word today that a family friend is battling in ICU currently, and her five-year-old daughter just wants to know, when is mom going to be home? When is mom going to be home? And it just breaks my heart to hear this. So I just really encourage you, if you have the ability to get the shot and the vaccine, please do so, not just for you, but your friends, your family, and your community. Thank you.
Trustee Garcia, please.
Thank you, President Bradford. First, I want to congratulate our appointments this evening. Ms. Monica León, Mr. Pablo Ponce, Ms. Romina Mesa, Mr. Peter Zamora, Ms. Maria Rodriguez, Ms. Amy Noiz, and Ms. Jaclyn Paul. Just want you all to know, as my trustee colleague here said, that we all have confidence in your abilities, and we look forward to your success in the future. And welcome, student board members, Priscilla and Haley. We look forward to having you here. Appreciate you taking a leadership role at your schools, and I understand that this is a great commitment that you've made, and we look forward to a great year. And congratulations to our Teachers of the Year, Haley, Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Preciado, Ms. Rowe, and Ms. Sanchez, for being recognized by Assemblymember Sabrina Cervantes. I did have an opportunity to join the recognition ceremony, and one of the things I enjoyed was listening to your bios and your introduction, and especially your answer to the question, "What does it mean to be a teacher to you?" So I congratulate you again for a great job and keep up the great work. And a couple more things. I attended the Harupa Unified Management Retreat a few weeks ago, and just I wanted to say thanks to all those that put this together. Those are great opportunities to relax a little, get to know one another, welcome new management team members, and build long-lasting relationships. Team-building exercises like this are the reason Harupa has such a strong management team. And I'd like to thank all those involved in putting it together, especially Dr. Hanson and the cabinet. You got to have support from the top for these to succeed, and I know they support it wholeheartedly. Great event. And finally, thanks to Dr. Hanson and the cabinet staff for the in-person safety instruction plan. I know lots of time and effort went into this, and there are many staff members working behind the scenes that made it all possible. Thank you for doing all you can do to keep our students, teachers, staff, and community members safe. Great job, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Garcia. Trustee Regal, please.
Thank you, President Bradford. I'm going to just start with my Board comments for FFA, Young Achievers Awards. Congratulations. And under normal circumstances, you would come to the front of the room so everybody can see you. But I wanted to just ensure to congratulate you, as I know this is a lot of work, a long time for a commitment to be part of the FFA. So congratulations to all of you. And then the 2021 Teachers of the Year for Assembly 60, or District 60, congratulations. This side of the room. But you know, it's such an honor to have you in our district. I mean, there's five of you that are being recognized through the assembly, and I thank you for your dedication to get up there every day. We know that it's not- Obstacles, there's challenges, but it's also rewarding. And here is a moment that truly your work is- You're receiving that award for your commitment. So thank you, congratulations on those awards. And then I also want to bring up the first day of school. It seems like, you know, this is a new environment, and, you know, people have not been on campuses for quite some time. So trying to get acquainted and navigate through the campuses as well as a teacher's getting familiar, meeting students with face masks. So we don't know really what everybody looks like, but it seems like overall it went pretty well. So congratulations to administration and the staff on each campus to ensure that our students are in their classrooms. I know that there's some little hurdles, but you know, it's always going to happen. It's never going to be perfect, and we cannot, you know, put the magnifying glass on that because we are moving forward compared to where we were last year. So great job to everybody. And then, as mentioned by trustee- Who did bring that up? Navarro, the COVID. I know that everybody has a right, but we hear many stories and situations. But I did see an email deploy from PICO notifying that there is a COVID clinic on August 20th. So, you know, we can share that, and anybody that has not received the vaccine and is interested, I mean, as we see that there's variants going around, but we really want to encourage you just for the safety and to minimize the spread throughout the- as well as our community and for the health and safety. And student board members. Haley Bisbee and Priscilla Perez, thank you so much for coming down here tonight and providing the updates. But you guys did perfect. They were flawless, clear, precise on the information. So we love hearing these updates. We cannot get to those campuses every week, and it's very valuable. So I loved all the information you provided tonight. And then one other thing that I do want to share. I typically close the board meeting about some- President Advisory Board from Norco College. So I thought we would up into the board comments. And so August 9th, we had a President Advisory Board meeting with Norco College. There's other community members throughout Norco, Corona, Riverside, Harupa Valley that are within that jurisdiction. And Norco College is actually going to start school on August 23rd. And just like our district, they've had to come up with three phases of, you know, Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C. But primary, the focus is to go on in-person classes as well as within our district is a dual enrollment. So I have seen some emails going around, and students that are in high school, it really is a great opportunity if you have the bandwidth to support that and take an additional college course or courses through your high school career. So by the time you finish high school, you're going to be halfway done with receiving your AA. It's a good opportunity for all of our high school students. And then traditionally, as all employers are doing, but a lot of COVID prevention training, updates on their websites. So their maps are going to be a little bit easier to navigate, to understand where you're going. But also, I'm not sure if anybody has heard that Norco College is building a veterans center. So it's a small-ish, I don't want to say it's too small, building dedicated to veterans that are attending college. But they anticipate that will open up on November 10th. You know, I know that we have veterans within our communities, family members, but this is something that Norco College really takes pride in to ensuring that if people are serving for our country, they can come back and focus on getting their education, especially with that GEI bill. And so if you want some more information, please visit their website. And then another important factor is part of that focus now is in the veterans. But there is Giving Week coming up on October 4th through 8th, and their goal is to raise $40,000. But you know, if you're hearing me talk about this, you're like, what are veterans? Why are you talking about veterans? They're our people. They're in our community. They're our parents. They're our children. They're, you know, brothers, aunts, and uncles. So really, if you know somebody in your family that is a veteran, I mean, here's a great opportunity that we can help them, you know, achieve a higher education. And then my next meeting, President Advisory Meeting, is September 13th. That is all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I continue to thank our teachers and classified staff for your courage in providing the best possible learning environment to our students throughout last year and summer school. When I watched Assemblymember Cervantes' Teacher of the Year presentation recently, I wondered if Harupa Unified had more teachers honored than any other district? As the saying goes, "Our teachers touch the future by the lives they impact." So on that note, my personal theme for 2021-22, which I shared with Superintendent Hanson, is: Let's be marvelous. When I was a child, my favorite auntie thought everything I did was marvelous. And she would say, "Marvelous." And I believed her. Children believe what we say about them. So let's all be marvelous together. And let's get it started in here. Agenda item for public verbal comments. Number one. Claudia Arzate, please. You have three minutes. Oh, wait, 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 just a second. The opportunity is included on the agenda of each regular board meeting, so residents may make suggestions or identify concerns about matters affecting the school district or request an item to be placed on a future agenda. The Harupa Unified School District Board of Education encourages and invites the public to comment on items listed on its agenda or on matters within its subject jurisdiction. Public speakers have a right to their own opinions, and neither board members nor staff will be responding to those opinions. The district's silence should not be mistaken for agreement but simply to avoid legal entanglements and/or to protect the privacy of situations that may involve lawsuits, employee discipline, or dismissal. Please be assured, any serious allegations have been or will be thoroughly investigated. Any responses from the board will take place during board member comments. Pursuant to JUSD's Board Bylaw 9323, each public comment submission will be allowed three timed minutes, and comments will be limited to a total of 20 minutes per topic if there are multiple persons wishing to comment. A staff member will facilitate- Oh, no, we don't do that anymore. Pursuant to Section 54954.2 of the Government Code, no action or discussion shall be undertaken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Now for the request to speak. Forgive me. Claudia Arzate, now, please. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Claudia Cervantes Arzate, and I'm here on behalf of my son Julian Loera, who is a seventh grader now at Merrilloma-
Merrilloma Middle School. Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, thank you. He's currently enrolled at Merrilloma Middle School, but he has been at Camino for years, and he is supposed to go to Harupa. His older brother is going to Patriot High School. And I keep hearing, you know, everybody's starting school. My son has not started school, and it's- My hands are tied. All I'm being told is, well, he has to go to his assigned school. I already did the transfer. I can't take him to school. I have to leave my house at 4:00 AM. I work in Los Angeles. I don't- I feel like this is- I've been coming to the district for two weeks, every single day. day to ask for help, to hear my voice. I'm here for my son. My son needs to go to school. He cannot be missing any more school. I was declined. They told me, I talked to the principal at Miraloma, and she said that we can try independent studies. They told me they couldn't offer that. Try virtual. I called virtual. There's a waiting list apparently for that. Again, my son cannot be missing any more school and I need help. I need help. My son is at, he's supposed to Patriot. And I dropped him off at my sitter's at 4:00 AM every single day. She's the only one I have to help. I need help. My hands are tied. I've emailed Mr. Owens, Rihanna, Belen, I mean, you name it, I've talked to him. I need help. I need somebody to help me get my son to go to school. And he needs, he needs to go to Harupa Middle School. That's the only option I have. And all I keep hearing is he's got to go to school. Okay, I understand. I don't have a way to get my son to school and I'm here because I need help. I don't know what else to do. I've emailed, I've been in this office, the other one, every single day for two weeks. And I feel like we're not being heard. My son is just a number. My son is a student. He needs to go to school and I don't know what else to do. It's really frustrating. It's just really frustrating. I'm not getting any help. It's already, like I said, August 16th and my son, and you know, seventh grade is an awkward stage as it is already. So he's already missing out on the orientation. Like I went with my son to Patriot, to the whole registration week. I didn't get to do that with my other one because we're still waiting on the transfer and I don't know what else to do. So coming here with my, you know, last cry for help because I just don't know what else to do. I was hoping maybe you guys can guide me or just help me. Been wanting to talk to you. I always seem to miss you. Else to do. And I'm here for my son. My son is missing school. It's already been, I was told Wednesday last week I was going to get an answer, nothing. I talked today with Ryan. She said Thursday. So, and now I told my son, my son's like, are you sure this time, Mom? Are you sure? Like that's what I'm, that's what I was told. So if I could please have some help. This is my last cry for help. I don't know what else to do. I don't want my son missing school. Thank you.
Is there someone to clean the microphone?
What do you guys suggest I do next? I don't know. What are my options? If he can't be in virtual or he can't have independent studies, what can I do? I have three kids. I have, I can't put them all in private school. I can't, I can't quit my job. I can't. All of my family lives in Washington DC. I don't have any help. So I just, I need help. My babysitter lives across the street from Patriot. That's why my son, and he needs to go to Harupa Middle School. I just feel like my son is being tossed around like a number and that breaks my heart. It breaks my heart because he's, we're not being heard.
You're being heard. Thank you. We will, drops are made on this Thursday. So you'll be, we'll be in contact with you after we've done the drops of students that have not been attending.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen Martines, please. Oh, and somebody clean the, sanitize the podium. Thank you.
Good evening. Today I'm here to announce and put a date on your calendar for the Harupa Valley Food Fest. I hope that you consider as a district, a community member, the Lions and Rotary Clubs are now working on their 22nd Harupa Valley Food Fest. Over the past years, Harupa Valley Food Fest has been a community event co-sponsored by the Lions and Rotarians. In the past 20 years, thanks to sponsors and help from our district, we have also been able to provide scholarships and totaling hundreds of thousands of dollars in leadership activities and senior scholarships, public speaking contests, and support of our different booths and FFA in the area. In addition, I'd like to have you all and welcome you to add to your calendar, October 16th. We will be having our 22nd Food Fest at the Skyview Event Center. This is a transformation and for us, as last year, we use a virtual platform to auction off basket items and donations. We're anticipating right now 25 food and beverage stations along with entertainment, a silent auction, a live auction. And our corporate businesses and sponsors would be pleased in acknowledging the district as well as one of our over 60 sponsorships. In the past, we've had 300 to 600 people in attendance and hopefully will draw even more this year using the Skyview Event Center for the first time as a public event. And I wanted to add the sponsorship letter, turn it into you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Sonia Vianeda. Sonia Vianeda.
You got it correct. First, I would like the school board to act quickly to secure the safety children crossing the streets outrage at the Delsol Academy School website over reckless driving and complete disregard for child safety. It is now a daily issue. Please do not wait until someone is hurt or yes, worse yet, killed. The second item I'd like to bring up is I would like the board to make the mask optional. Requiring kids to wear masks all day at school does more harm than good. While we all want to do something to reduce infections, we should also act prudently to guard against unintended consequences. When infections for COVID-19 started, we naturally followed the human tendency to want to do something for our country or school district, hoping to create the best case scenarios for safety. Advocating for wearing face masks is an understandable way to do something. We know that smart hygiene practices, washing hands, covering coughs and sneezes, keeping children home when they are ill, provide measurable benefits in reducing the spread of the disease. But the research on using face masks is much less conclusive for their use in surgical settings. I often have the debate that kids wearing the mask all day is more harmful because they are not being used correctly. And just looking around, I did observe a lot of you guys. According to the CDC, you should not wear your mask where it's loose. And I see often this is not with the kids, it's fully exposed. The reposition or the adjusting and the touching of the mask, a lot of you guys did this today, certainly to have your drinks. And that is where bacteria builds up. Do not wear your mask under your nose. Saw that a couple of times over here. Not to point anyone out, sorry. I see kids following these guidelines. I would also, I would also, I'm sorry. It's more probable that the children who wear the mask face fully experiencing more sickness, more sick days. This isn't surprising considering that the human body is designed to, through exhaling. Holding those waste against the face creates a whole new set of problems as children inhale bacteria and viruses their body are trying to get rid of. In addition, let's talk about the emotional strain kids are facing. Children rely on facial expressions, interpret what they hear, they respond to facial cues and interact and respond appropriately to teachers and peers. The harm done when they are part of the human interaction is eliminated, should not be underestimated. One other issue as I am seeing is the mask acne. Just today, my daughter put a Band-Aid on her face. I asked, what did you do? And she told me that the mask would cover it up. She had popped the pimple so bad that she needed a Band-Aid just to stop the bleeding. I am concerned about the long-term mental health effects of the students. I am sure teachers are seeing children who have developed unhealthy worry that they will make everyone around them sick. The mask wearing is still fear, is instilling fear in our children. In some cases, has caused anxiety levels leading to withdrawal of social interactions. I support mask wearing for those who feel it works, but for the rest of us, all we are asking for is for you to give us a choice. Lastly, I will remind you that we're about a month away from the recall and all this mask mandate will go away when he's gone. And I give the parents a choice respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item five, administrative reports and written communications. A, consider nomination for CSBA 2021 Legislative Awards Program, Dr. Hanson.
As you all are aware, CSBA will honor members of the California State or California Senate and Assembly as well as members of Congress who actively work to improve our public schools and who exercise leadership in the legislative arena. School boards are invited to participate in CSBA Legislative Awards Program by nominating a member of the California Senate and Assembly as well as members of Congress who represent our school district. Nominations need to be submitted by a local school board only, and any nominations must be postmarked September 3rd. So you have the opportunity tonight by consensus, this doesn't need to be a formal vote, to make a nomination of one of our local legislators, if you'd like to nominate one of them for this program.
I think all of our legislators are supportive of education.
I agree, President Bradford, and I think we should nominate all three of them.
Any other discussion?
Just to be clear, it's Assembly Member Cervantes, Senator Roth, and Congressman
He doesn't represent our district. He, we don't have jurisdiction. He doesn't have jurisdiction in our district and it calls for jurisdiction within our district. Okay, very good. By consensus, trustee DiWiler Navarro, okay, nods approval. All right. B, consider nominations for California School Boards Association Directors at large, African-American, American Indian, and county, Dr. Hanson.
So similarly, this is, just requires consensus, but you have the opportunity also to nominate somebody for directorship for CSBA in, as a African-American, American Indian, County is not, is for the county school board only. So just be those two subgroups. Is there a nomination or?
I don't have anyone. I think.
No, do I?
CJ Johnson, Moreno Valley.
That's inspired.
We just need consensus.
CJ Johnson from Moreno Valley.
For African-American, right?
Yes.
Now, I think CJ would probably have to accept, but I think we can go ahead and have a consensus on nominating him tonight.
I think that's a fabulous choice.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay. Agenda item 5C, opening of school year report, Dr. Hanson.
Yes, it was very exciting. We've completed our first week of school back in person, full, full-time instruction. And so we're super excited to see our students around. And we've been able to witness the hustle and bustle on our campuses, see these young faces and a little bit older faces, mature faces move about our schools. It's been really exciting. And I know that we saw a lot of happy faces over the last couple of days. We're at about 18,600 students in our district. And as you all know, we have wonderful employees who were stood ready to welcome these children into our campuses and help them. Many of our kids, this is the first time that stepping onto that campus. So remember our kindergartners and our first graders or eighth graders or ninth and 10th graders, first time on their campuses. And so our employees, our staff members, our teachers, our certificated staff, our classified staff, our administrators, all just to make these kids feel welcome and get started this year. So just a couple of highlights I'd like to mention. We have some new CTE pathways this year, the performing arts pathway at Rubito High School, manufacturing at Patriot High School, cybersecurity at Nuevo Vista High School. We're also kicking off our Dell Student Tech Crew Program at our three high schools and Mission Middle School, where our young engineers will learn how to fix Chromebooks and learn those skills and actually do some work here for us in the district, putting those skills into practice. So that's exciting. Our virtual program continues to grow. We've doubled in the last week. So that's exciting, being able to provide those opportunities for students who are pursuing their education virtually. Our Dual Immersion Program is now over 1,300 students, over five schools, elementary, middle school, and high school. That's exciting as well. Our Parents Center served over 600 families just in the last few days, assisting them in enrolling in our schools. So that was also some hard work by our staff there, putting those efforts in place. As a district, we've welcomed 81 new certificated employees, 25 new classified employees. All get to begin their careers here in Harupa. We're really excited for them to join Team Harupa and to be able to nurture their growth and development as educators and supporters of our students. Regardless of the shortage that we have in the workforce and transportation and nutrition services, they all stepped up to the plate and dealt with some of the chaos that ensued as these bodies came onto our campuses. Or we were able to pick up our kids, get them to school in the transportation department, feed all of our students, and make sure that they all had the opportunity to not only get to school, but enjoy the educational experience that we provide here in Harupa Unified School District. And of course, our facilities look spectacular. Our maintenance and operations crews and custodial staff, grounds crews have all been working diligently throughout the summer to make sure that our campuses were ready, they're clean, they're manicured well, and ready to receive our students. And I know that our teachers and our staff really, really appreciate those efforts as well. So it's been a team effort. You know, we didn't know necessarily what to expect coming out of an 18-month hiatus. But of course, here in Harupa, our employees stepped up and did what they always do, and that's provide an amazing experience for our kids so that they have an amazing learning experience themselves. And so again, just want to thank all of our staff for the hard work that they put into receiving our students and certainly thank our students for their patience and welcome them into the 2021-2022 school year.
Two board members, I just realized you are not obligated to stay for the full length of the board meeting. Your studies are your first obligation and you may be excused when you feel it's appropriate. Okay? Without causing any alarm from us. So don't feel obligated to stay, but you are perfectly welcome to stay as long as you wish. Okay? Thank you. All right. Let's see. Report on summer school 2021, Mr. Dubrovsky.
All right. So moving from the start of the year back to summer, I wanted to just take a few minutes and kind of talk about our summer programs this week. And they were such a resounding success and sort of explain to you why that was the case and what we were able to do for our students this summer. Okay. But before doing that, I just wanted to thank all the site and district leaders who helped to plan the program and then really thank the hundreds of teachers who chose to give up a portion of their summer and serve our kids. It was vitally important for our students to have that bridge between all this time off and the start of the school year. So we had several hundreds of teachers who stuck with it and were willing to do that and designed some really fantastic engaging experiences for our kids. So wanted to say thank you and then. Can you go on? Yeah. Next slide. Okay. So these were the programs that we have, some of which are. of which are continuing but augmented, and some of which were brand-new. Our high school summer school program was something that we've done every year, but was augmented significantly. The summer graduation program for our students who didn't quite get there, our seniors, that's an existing program that was also augmented and was bigger and better. A new program was our LEAP program, Learning Engages All Possibilities, for our TK through eight students. We haven't had an elementary, middle school summer program for more than 10 years, and so that was a new program that just began, and it was a huge success. Our extended school year for our students with disabilities, that is a program that has continued and continues to exist. And then our Think Together summer program is something that we have offered. We've been able to get that grant to run that program, but it was dramatically enhanced this year. So we'll talk about each one and why it was bigger and better or new. Next slide. So our goals for the summer program were many. We wanted to reorient our students to school. They've been out and at home for a long time, and in order to prepare them so that it wasn't such a big change, walking in the door first day of school, we wanted to offer a robust series of summer programs to get our kids back in the habit of being at school, to have them feel supported at school, to realize this was going to be a positive welcoming environment. We wanted to build community with our kids in class and focus on behavior and social-emotional learning, to prepare them to be ready for school. Our kids have been through a lot in the last 18 months, as we all have, but we wanted to support them emotionally and help them in the summer to be ready when it came time to come back now. We wanted to provide academic supports. You know, it's been a struggle both academically and emotionally for the last 18 months. So we wanted to support their academic growth, begin to fill in some of those gaps, to get them, you know, thinking and learning and participating again. We wanted to provide credit recovery. So for our high school students who may have missed some of their classes, failed some of their classes, we wanted there to be opportunities for them to get back on the path toward graduation. And then for our seniors who didn't quite make it, we wanted to get them graduated. So we wanted to-- we had all those goals for the many different programs. Next slide. So now, just to talk about each one. The high school summer school, that is structured as credit-earning classes. Each site offers classes that they see the data shows that their students need those classes, and students sign up and take those classes and earn credits. The priorities for those classes are A, credit recovery. So when students have failed classes, it's providing them another opportunity to get those credits for that class that they weren't able to pass. B, A-through-G validation. So when a student is on his or her way towards being A-through-G compliant and eligible to enter a UC school or a CSU school and gets a D in a class, that class, that takes them out of that pathway, and they're no longer A-through-G validated. So we wanted to provide those students an opportunity to up that grade to a C or better so that they're then maintain their A-through-G status. Acceleration. So some students, they want to get certain classes completed and to take other challenging courses that they would like to take during the school year. For example, Ed Wong needed during summer because she wanted to take that extra class during the school year. We want to provide those opportunities for kids too, so that they can take all of the classes that they would like to during their high school experience. And during this year, we had three times the offerings available to our students than what we have had for the last many years. So we actually offered 135 year-long sections across our three high schools. So there were a lot of opportunities. So that's 135 teachers right there. In terms of outcomes with the high school summer program, our total enrollment, 912, is about 4,500 students, and we had 2,965 students in summer school. So that's like 66% of our kids attended summer school, which is up from 1,070 the year before. So three times the students, they came out and they participated and they earned credits. 17,240 credits were earned during summer. So that was a phenomenal amount, up from 2,980 the year before. So-- and granted, that was a pretty low number because that was the COVID year, but it's still, it's triple our average sort of amount of credits earned. So a lot of kids got a lot of credits and helped to get back on the path for graduation. Next slide. So our summer graduation program is something that we run every year for students who didn't quite get there, and the structure is credit-earning classes. So it's an attempt to give students the classes they need so that they can graduate in the summer graduation and get finished. So it's students who are within 20, 25 credits of graduation are eligible to participate and can potentially graduate. We had 74 students enrolled and 56 students who graduated. And I don't have prior data, but I know that that's a good third more than what had happened in the past. And I think part of the reason it wasn't so substantially high was the board's decision to allow students to take advantage of the California minimum graduation requirements for those students that were impacted by COVID and didn't quite get there. So that was one opportunity to get graduated. This was another opportunity if they weren't able to quite get there. So we were excited to see all those students at the summer graduation this year. Next slide. Then we have our LEAP program. S stands for Learning Engages All Possibilities. We were able to offer courses at all of our TK through eight schools, all 16 elementary schools and Del Sol. So every student had an opportunity to attend a homeschool offering. We focused first and foremost on behavior, social-emotional learning, and engagement. So we wanted these to be exciting, engaging, interesting for kids, and so we asked our teachers to come up with a passion project that they were excited about, that kids would be excited about. And I'm sure you all heard the positive messages from our teachers and our kids, and I know as I walked through classrooms, and a couple others said the same thing. It was hard to tell who was having more fun, kids or the teachers. Like, it was a great, it's a great, successful program. And then, in addition to those fun and engaging activities, there was academic support built in as well. Next slide. So we ended up with 187 total classes, so that's 187 more teachers, and served 2,693 students. So we were able to serve a ton of students and get them, you know, interested, engaged, and have fun, and be back in school, and, you know, it was a great success from a volume standpoint. And additionally, next slide. We did some surveys of kids. They're social-emotional surveys, and these are hard to read, but they're just a smattering of them. I just wanted to share, like, we asked kids their thinking, both pre the start of the program and at the end of the program. And these two slides show, one is like, I carefully listened to other people's point of view, and the bars on the left, the yellow is the pre, the blue is the post, and that answer is for mostly. So you can see that as students completed the program, the number of students reporting that I mostly do that increased. And then over to the far-right side, it says rarely, and you can see the number of students who reported rarely went down. So the positive went up, the negative went down. Same for that second one. It says, I set goals for myself to accomplish difficult tasks. So this is just a sampling of the survey that we did, but that kind of result was universal across the board. We saw that students reported an increase in pro-social and academic behaviors as a result of it. And in addition, we just heard tons from the community, from teachers, from kids, about what a great experience it was. So it was a resounding success. Next slide. Our extended school year is a program that we have always offered for our students with disability and continue to offer it. The difference this year was that we modeled both the 912 program and the TK8 program after the existing general ed programs, the high school summer school and the LEAP program. So we focused on credit-earning classes and credit recovery at the 912 level, and then had engaging, fun, activity-based classes at the TK8 level. Next slide. And we were able to serve 149 high school students who earned 1,430 credits, 230 middle school students, and 245 elementary students. And our students with disabilities had the option. They could have participated in the extended school year, or they could have signed up for the equivalent courses that I described earlier. So these are students that chose that and also reported similarly positive experiences. As you can see by the credits earned, they earned a ton of credits. And then the last program is our Think Together program. Typically, we're able to obtain a grant that will allow us to run this program at five elementary schools through the summer. And so we pick them regionally, and students come from all across the district to engage in those programs. Fortunately, this year, we were able to invest and up that to 11 elementary sites. So we had it in like 2/3rds of our schools, and were able to serve a great deal of more kids. I don't have any outcome data because Think Together wasn't finished with analyzing their data yet, so we don't have it yet. But they also took a cue from our LEAP program. They went with like a circus theme and had a series of engaging activities. They have their own educational curriculum, and so that was a great program. And we were fortunate this year that the legislature gave us flexibility. Typically, that has to be done by June 30th because of the fiscal year. They gave us flexibility to have it later, so we were able to offer that program in July, when all the previous programs I described took place in June. So students could actually participate in the Think Together program in July and say the LEAP program in June. So they had a lot of options across the summer. So we're very excited about what we saw this summer. It was a huge undertaking, but we were able to serve a lot of kids and got a lot of rave reviews. And so we're already, you know, thinking, planning about next year and what we can offer to try to continue to have this type of a great, robust summer series of programs for our students.
The page that says outcomes, I love the photos of the kids in the LEAP t-shirts. Tell me more about those. Did they make their own t-shirts?
I apologize, but I have no, yeah, I don't have that information.
They just look like they had too much fun.
Yeah. I asked for photos from the program. So these are our kids in those programs, but I didn't get the background for the shirts they were wearing.
What school is the photo above it?
I don't have that information either.
Dulso.
You're asking hardcore.
Dulso.
Is it Dulso? Okay.
Okay, thank you. It makes me think of the kids who played Led Zeppelin's "Cashmere" on the marimbas. Any other comments or questions? Yes, please.
President Brad.
Please.
No, you guys are first. Go ahead.
Garcia.
Thank you, President Bradford. Thank you, Mr. Dubrovsky, for a great presentation. A lot of great outcomes there. I just have a couple of questions. So we had 69% high school summer school attendance, I think is what you said, right? So is that just because of COVID, people trying to get back? Is that something we'll be able to sustain going on for next year? And I'll ask the next one too, I think you can probably, kind of similar for the LEAP programs, is that also something that, I know the legislature gave us extra money for that, but is that also something we plan on continuing next year? Thank you.
Yeah, the legislature did give us extra money, which is why we were able to offer all of these different programs. It's certainly our intention to offer these programs in whatever size we're able to fiscally afford next year. We're already working on how that might look. Certainly, like with the high school credit recovery program, that was augmented because we knew there's a significant need, and we believe that need will continue for some time. So our hope is to be able to have the funds, to be able to offer another robust year of summer at the end of the school year.
Trustee Navarro.
Thank you, President Bradford. And I think, Mr. Dubrovsky, I've heard lots of great things about the summer school. It seems like you covered all the grade levels and the students would-- one thing I didn't hear about was, what was the participation percent of the EL students?
I'd have to get that information for you. Let's see, I could provide you a high school EL percentage, a LEAP EL percentage. I can certainly do that in the weekly report too.
And was there a certain way to marketing it to them, or was it, I mean, was there a way that we went over beyond, especially with the numbers in our community, like, just a way to make them feel more inclusive, and then what we could do in the future to maybe raise those numbers if they weren't, you know, as high as we would like?
Yeah, we used our communication department, as well as Q Communications, and our schools, you know, did as much fanfare as they were able to do, and teachers individually advertised to their kids towards the end of the school year. So, you know, I think we used every avenue that we could. To be honest, our initial worry was that we would be limited by the amount to give up this much time after an already very difficult school year. And that ended up not being a thing because teachers' kids came out by the hundreds, so we were very excited about that. So, yeah, I mean, I think we would look at some of those lessons learned. There was a lot of planning to be done, but those structures are now sort of in place, and we know how to do all those things. So we may be able to get some of those things in place a little earlier towards the end of the summer and maybe offer things a little bit more specifically. So, yeah, we're definitely looking at improving our processes after having done this once. A lot of it was, it was very new, particularly with the LEAP program.
Yeah, no, you guys have a lot of work to overcome there. But yeah, if you could get that numbers to be, when you have a chance, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Trustee Regal.
Thank you, President Bradford. I love this presentation, especially through the summer, from the staff, the parents, and especially the students. I mean, there was just such a buzz around this, especially the LEAP. I mean, we know that COVID had an impact on all of our lives in first time, but the type of learning that was really great, I mean, I would suggest from teachers of just the hands-on learning. I mean, whether they're painting on stones and doing little exercises of, you know, nature or something, and that really impacted the students. And you could just see some of the pictures that were shared, even like on Instagram, you would see the students were just so enthusiastic. But it looks like the small classes, I calculated about 14 students per teacher was about the average?
We did. At the LEAP level, we averaged that, and it was because when we began planning and advertising that program, we were still operating under that three feet of distance, or six feet of distancing, so we knew we couldn't do that. So whether that will continue at exactly that level next year or not is kind of up in the air. But certainly, we appreciated the benefit of the smaller classes and would want to continue that to some extent.
Right. I would anticipate this becoming more infectious just because of the excitement and the final results. I mean, the students were just so happy to be in that classroom, and the teachers made it an experience. I mean, I'm in marketing, so everything is about an experience and overall, and that's what we need. And so I'm hoping in the long run, this is something that we can continue moving forward in the summer, whether it's just even students trying to make up or catch up, but something that just is a hands-on experience in the school environment. That's what we want our students to have. And as far as the high school, though, is this something that we're going to, we know that COVID did have an impact to credit recovery, but it seems that there's also more of that drive, and the students have goals to achieve more. Is there any plans to keep a larger number of options for classes in the high school environment?
I mean, I think those needs will all continue to exist. There will still be credit-- there's always been credit recovery needs. There's always been a need for acceleration. So I think it'll be, you know, those will be some fiscal decisions that will have to be made a little later in the year, but our hope is to offer a very robust program once again next year.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. No other questions? Thank you. All right.
Item E, other administrative reports and written communications, are there any?
There are not.
All right. Let's move along to the public hearing session. One, hold a public hearing on compliance with the Children's Internet Protection Act. SIPA and Internet Safety Policy, Mrs. Ford.
Thank you. As a requirement of the federal universal file known as E-Rate and the Children's Internet Protection Act, otherwise known as SIPA, the district must provide an annual public notice and hearing addressing its technology protection measures and internet safety policy. The hearing dates and copies of the internet safety policies were posted from August 6th through August 13th, and at this time, the board should formally open and close the public hearing on compliance with the Children's Internet Protection Act and Internet Safety Policy.
I shall. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing session on compliance with the Children's Internet Protection Act, Internet Safety Policy. Are there any comments from the public?
We have not received any comments.
This public hearing session is now formally closed. Moving on to the action session. A, approve, adopt routine action items by consent. Administration recommends the board approve, adopt routine action items A1 through 40, regarding, yes?
Moved over.
All right. There is a motion by trustee Regal. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right. Have you refreshed your iPads? All right. Call for the vote, please. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions? Okay. Oh, okay. Does it appear to be 5-0 on the system? 5-0, the motion passes. Okay. Item B, adopt resolution number 2022 slash 04, resolution of intention of the Board of Education of the Harupa Unified School District to annex certain additional territory into the Community Facilities District Number 16, and to authorize the levy of a special tax within the area to be annexed, Mrs. Ford.
Thank you. In 2017, the district formed CFD 16. The CFD allows for the annexation of territories or developers, developments to annex into the CFD. RC Hub's Companies has presented an offer for the annexation of its, of its developments into, into the CFD. In this initial step of the annexation process, the board is to adopt a resolution stating its intention to annex the territory into the CFD and levy a special tax. The rate of the special taxes will be set each year based on the formula in the rate and method of apportionment for the CFD, and that was done when the CFD was formed. This resolution sets the date of a public hearing with respect to the annexation, directs the clerk of the board to publish a related notice of such hearing, and prescribes the voting procedure for an election on the annexation. Copies of the resolution, the rate and method of apportionment, and the boundary map are included in the backup materials. And this is two smaller developments. The 28 units is one development that is right near Pedley Elementary, and then there's 25 units that's at the southeast corner of Mission Boulevard in Aggett. So, and they are able to annex into our CFD 16.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Motion has been recorded and passed 5-0.
Thank you. Agenda item C, approve personnel matters. One, ratify tentative agreement with CSCA Harupa 392. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you. As you know, a tentative agreement has been reached with CSCA Harupa for the 2021 and 2122 school years. That agreement includes a one-time off-schedule 2% payment for the 2021 school year, an ongoing 4% increase to the classified salary schedule for the 2122 school year that would be effective July 1st, 2021, a $200 per FTE increase to the health and welfare contribution, a $2,200 distribution from the classified health and welfare pool, welfare pool for eligible classified employees, an additional longevity increment at the completion of 35 years of employment, some additional language provisions regarding educational leave and uniform allowance, requirements for disclosure at a board meeting, and to the county where all met on July 12th at the, our last board meeting. Nonetheless, a copy of the agreement and the disclosure paperwork is all included in the backup material. Additionally, I'll add that CSCA Harupa, their members ratified this agreement last week. So congratulations to our CSCA leadership who are here tonight. On that, at this time, administration recommends that the board ratify the tentative agreement with CSCA Harupa 392. Thank you.
I'll move to approve. Thank you. Is there any discussion? No. Call for the vote, please. Motion passes. C2, approve compensation package for certificated management, classified management, and confidential employees. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, President Bradford. Management and confidential positions that are held by our certificated and classified employees are not represented by a union. Included among these positions are all the district's principal coordinators with district and site responsibilities, classified supervisors, directors, and confidential employees. We have generally recommended increases to the salary schedule for these employees in amounts that are comparable to those employees who engage in formal collective bargaining. Therefore, administration is recommending a compensation package that is again similar to that approved for represented employee groups. It would include a 4% increase to the salary schedule for the 2122 school year, a $200 per employee increase to the health and welfare contribution, and a one-time off-schedule payment of 2% based on the 2021 salary schedule. Updated salary schedules for management and confidential employee groups are all included in the backup materials. And administration recommends that the board approve the compensation package for certificated management, classified management, and confidential employees. Thank you.
I'm moved to approve.
Thank you. One second. Okay. Any discussion on this? No. Call for the vote, please. Motion passes 5-0. Agenda item D, board member committee reports. Trustee Regal, let's start with you.
I do not have any committee reports at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Garcia, personally.
Thank you, President Bradford. I don't have any committee reports, but I do have a couple of announcements. First of all, August 27th and 28th. So August 27th, the VFW is hosting a spaghetti dinner, and all proceeds go to the Haruba Valley High School Hall of Fame. So I'll get more information and hope you can join us for that Friday evening. And August 28th, the Lions Club is having their annual luau, also at the VFW. And as you know, the Lions Club, as Ms. Martinez mentioned today, does a lot for students and forms scholarships and opportunities to volunteer. So I hope you can join us for those.
Will they roast pig?
No. No, we'll be doing ribs.
What luau is there with ribs?
Well, they gotta, they gotta have a cook. So I, I don't know how to do roast pigs. So, thank you.
Trustee Navarro.
No committee reports, but I will be finishing up my Keenan Save Schools online training this weekend. As a reminder, as board members have to do that.
The reminder. Trustee Dipmiller.
No reports, no pigs. I did my training.
Bad Karen, no biscuit. I have no committee report. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your interest and involvement in our students, our teachers, our staff. Stay safe and see you next time. Thank you again. We are adjourned.